Meeting to order at 6:30. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
George Collis.
Here.
Aaron Winchester here, Mark Freeman.
Here.
Derek Burton.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And agenda approval.
Move to approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the township board and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
I would request that we moved 7A down as item number nine under new business, just so you can clarify what the wording of that actually means, not being an assessor.
Okay, 7A and B kind of go together, so we just say seven, and that becomes item number nine.
Okay.
So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved by Clerk Winchester. Support?
Support.
Support by Trustee Burton. Roll call. Any further discussion? No, there is not consent agenda, so go ahead and do roll call.
Steve Bruce.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Derek Burton.
Yes.
Aaron Winchester, yes. George Collis.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Public hearing, we have none. Presentations, it says we have none, but I know that I saw John Ballant come in from HRC, and he had a report on the engineering study that we had done out the Farmstead, so I'd like to let him do that at this time, if you would, please. I could probably call it under old business, but, I mean, under the tractor, which it's same.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse the mask. I was home with COVID all last week, so.
But you're okay now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was actually the, it was like a light head cold. Very nice.
Good, glad to hear.
So, good evening, I'm John Ballant. I think I've presented to some of you before in the past. This is my first time at a trustee's meeting, so I'm John Ballant with HRC, here to give a little update on the Farmstead. We had G2 consulting group go out and do some geotechnical work at the Farmstead. They did a total of, I'm going to say, eight borings in different locations. We coordinated these borings with the architect that the township has hired to get borings for buildings and borings for parking lot areas, so that we know how to design those things. We'll know about foundations, what kind of foundations need to be put on the buildings, how deep, how wide, as well as what kind of, if we're putting down pavement or gravel, what those sections need to be, so that we're not redoing any, anything, because things are sinking or anything like that. We'll know how to, you know, if we have to put down a geo grid or something like that, this report tells us that. I'll, I have copies that I can pass out. These are, these are all labeled draft right now, because I did send it back to the consulting firm to have a couple of things changed. They made some assumptions that aren't correct as far as what type of building the township's looking at. We never told them what type of building to look at, but they made an assumption of a slab-on-grade building, which is not necessarily what we'd be looking to do. In addition, they had just some typograph layers and stuff like that, which we want to make sure are resolved prior to this being a formally accepted document. So with that, I'd like to say that, you know, with this, progress is being made on this, on this project, much slower than we had anticipated. There's a lot of moving parts, and our goal is not to do work and then redo work, for instance, like parking lots. We could design a parking lot tomorrow, but we're working with the architect to site the building in the right location and get the right layout of a building, so we want to make sure we're not designing the parking lot and then have to go and redo it when he says, "I want the building up here." So it's moving a little bit slower, but we are making some good progress with this. This gets the architect moving on a little faster, so he knows, this helps him site the building on the property, a little more than what we, not having this. This, he'll be able to say, "Well, hey, we can't put the building maybe in this little area, because the soils aren't good here. Let's move it slightly this way," or a little further this way, to make it in the right spot. So that's about all I have. George, Board, did you have any questions?
Just when do you expect it to be completed?
The project?
Yeah. Well, no, your part.
Our part, so we are working on the civil design portion of this. So right now, we're working with the architect, because he's going to give, he's going to give the township a building layout and say, "This is the building." And then, from there, we will design around that building in many cases, but we're also working with a gentleman named Dean Sutton, who's moving a barn up here right now, so we're working with him right now on laying out that building, and I think he's going to be starting construction before anything else of the Ernst barn.
Okay.
And we're looking to do some staking in the next couple of weeks, next probably week or so. We'll get the center roadway staked out, the farm road, we're calling it. We're going to get that staked out, so that we can meet with the architect and Mr. Sutton to, to make sure everything looks right on the property, and we may make some final, some additional adjustments from there.
Now, that farm road really will define the project from the east, from east and west sides of the property, in relationship to where the building is going, so.
So are they still trying to determine whether or not the site plan as it sits right now is likely the way it's going to stay, or are they still reviewing that information?
I think, so the original, the conceptual site plan that was presented, was this six months ago, maybe? That's changed a little bit with, because originally, we had the, and I wish I would have brought a board with me. Originally, we had the Township Hall building sited a little bit further to the south, so just on the north side of the, what we're calling the North House. That is actually one of the lowest points on the property, so that's actually where we're looking to put the detention area. And then, from, from there, we're thinking the parking lot and then the Township Hall building on the north side of the parking lot. So we kind of flipped those things around, just because of the topography of the site.
Yeah, there's, there's two changes from that original map. That's one, where we just take the building and flip it to the other side of the park lot. Then the second one is the Ernst barn on the drawing actually runs north and south. We're going to take it and flip it like this, so that it's going east and west, and it puts it up closer to that fenced-in corral area, so the animals would go right into the barn and utilize it. So there are just a couple of smaller changes, but that comes with some of this stuff.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yep. Any other questions?
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. I hope you feel better. Okay, we'll go to reports, and I'll start out with Mr. Ruth.
Nothing for me.
And then I'll go to Mr. Burton.
Okay. So really, there were two topics during our planning commission. The month previous to this one, we had requested that the Renaissance Festival come out, and they did. They had mentioned that they put signage on Dixie Highway and expressway exits to help with traffic and congestion, put a new exit road in, so there is now an entrance and exit, stated the center lane tends to be moving freely now. They mentioned a traffic study is being done. The residents did receive the flags that I know was discussed. There was some minor miscommunication, I think, among the staff of the Sheriff's Department on what those were for, but I know that they had said that they would be calling the Sheriff's Office the next day to get all those settled. And then, the Riverside, some of these things, there's, continues to be flooding concerns by residents, stating the Quik and Fish Lake Roads, even with the retention pond. Density continues to be spoken of regularly. Traffic concerns on Grange Hall, as well as inside of the actual establishment. Parking cars for the homes was a concern of the resident. Concerns about leaving the project uncompleted, and then, they had mentioned there's still an excavator bucket at Riverside through that as well. So some of those you've heard as well, but they were not there to address, you know, any of the, any of the concerns, but that's what was brought up during that meeting, and that is all I have.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
No report.
And Clerk Winchester?
The absent voter ballots will be ready for people that want them on the 29th, and we will be mailing the permanent absent voter ballots as well on that day.
Okay. Supervisors' report. You got the report from Mr. Ballant on the Farmstead. I am in contact with a fence company, a couple of fence companies, so they'll be getting help to us and getting kind of an idea of what we're looking at, so we can start thinking about prices and what goes on there. We've also been, didn't I announce at the last meeting that I had talked with Shannon Fasteners?
No.
Okay. I met with Ed Lum, and Shannon Fasteners has committed to funding the gazebo and the music area on the southern end of the farm. That's part of the main plan as well. The landscaping that'll terrace the hill behind the south house, and the gazebo that'll go back there. So that's an appreciated donation toward the Farmstead as well. I don't think I had anything else to report that isn't in the meeting, so we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Members of the public can address the Board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The Board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the Board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Anybody wish to speak during public comment? Chief Wile?
Good afternoon, evening. I'd like to speak about new business, item one, the increased budget that NOCA is looking for in support of the union agreement. I represent the union membership tonight, as I stand here. We have gone through the agreement. We voted on it unanimously and approved it, so it is ready for action. The Rose Township took action last week and unanimously supported the increase in budget and contribution to the authority, so you guys have the last voice, and I look for your support, and thank you. I have a.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at public comment? None appearing. I will move on to old business. I have yet to have a conversation with Harvey over the tractor. He's been going through dialysis, and it's difficult to get a hold of him. He just has the house phone, and you have to catch him in the house. I've been trying not to call him on the days he has his treatment, and I did take a drive out there trying to catch him, and of course, that day he wasn't home. So I have had a chance to speak with Roger Welch, who said that over the time that that tractor was in the old fire hall, which is six years ago or so, that they had replaced the clutch assembly, the crank bearing, new fuel pump, and lines were put in. The gas tank had been cleaned out, as well as the carburetor. So I know that they had done some work on it. He said they had gotten it to fire up, but that's about all he had on that. So I've yet to meet with Harvey, but that gives you the report there. Going into new business, the first thing on the agenda is the 2022-2023 NOCA amended budget proposal, resolution 2022-16.
It said, we do need to correct it on the resolution itself. It says 2021-16.
Oh, okay. Yeah, on the agenda, it says 2202.
Oh.
That's why I stumbled.
You know how often I do that? I do that a lot.
You, you tripped me up. That's why I had to go, no, I know what that means. Okay.
So it's, yeah, 2022. I would move to approve the 2022-2023 NOCA amended budget, proposed resolution 2022-16.
Support by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. Is there any discussion? None appearing. Roll call, please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Aaron Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Bruce?
Yes.
George Collis.
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and just to let the public know, this completes the process for the first union contract with NOCA, and at the board meeting the other night, we approved the, the employees had ratified the contract, and the NOCA Board approved the contract contingent upon our approval tonight. So with this approval, you guys can move forward. Mission accomplished. Contract completed.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not exactly what I would consider a celebration, but sure, go ahead.
That's true.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will go on to number two, which are budget amendments, proposed resolution 2022-17.
I would move to approve the 2022-2023 budget amendment, proposed resolution 2022-17.
Is there support? I mean, yeah, is there support?
I'll support.
Motion to approve by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. Is there any discussion?
The transfer to capital project fund, what is that?
That's out of our fund balance.
Okay.
So we did the, most of these to accommodate, not most of them, other than the fund balance, the new contribution to NOCA, because we don't have it in the.
Budget?
Yeah, well, we didn't collect it in the SAT fund. So the transfer to capital project is excessive of funds that we had in the fund balance, and we're moving it to capital project for the Township Hall.
Does that include like monies from the sale of the old fire hall?
Yes, but there's more to come, because we have some of this tied up in.
Yeah.
Investments. So I didn't want to leave us with.
Right.
Not enough cash flow, because we don't collect until December through, what, February? So it, yeah. So we'll be.
Steve, just, we're working on, we've got monies that are in the general fund, like the sale of the fire hall and the other sales. We're trying to move them all into a capital improvement fund, so as we get closer to building the building, we'll have a.
It's earmarked, yeah.
We'll have an earmarked fund to help pay for that.
Well, and then moving the expenses over to the capital project, too, is easier for us to keep track of what is going out and what is general fund, regular operating expenses, not.
Versus capital improvements, yeah.
However, I did, I'm going to have to bring another one, because when John said something about the G2, I hadn't considered that expense when I was, when I was putting the budget together in the capital project.
Hey, you know how much that is, was?
I don't remember. Was it like 16,000 or 17,000, I think?
Did, John still here? Did we approve that separately, or was it part of the?
It was approved after the fact. It's part of our contract.
Yeah.
I believe it was either 13 or 16 that was approved.
Okay.
And it's not that much. So it's less than that, but I couldn't tell it off early.
And as these things come down, we're paying attention to what part of them reflects the township building versus what part of them reflects the Farmstead project, because those are separate funds as well. So we have to meet kind of regularly and talk about where the divisions coming in there.
Is the transfer to capital project fund going to stay in the state bank, or is it going to be moved to our multi-bank securities investment?
I guess that would be up to, to you, the treasurer. So it'll be.
I need direction from, not, not the mechanics of the actual getting it into the investment, but if that is what the Board wants to do. Does the Board want that to go into the investment account, or to just stay in the state bank, but it's, it'll be moved from, it'll be moved to capital project fund? It'll be under that general ledger number, correct?
Right.
First, it's going to do that anyways. Then the decision has to be made of whether it wants to be invested or not.
So I guess the question I would have would be twofold. Do we get more interest? Do we make more on it if we transfer? But if we transfer, is it then dedicated for a certain period of time?
Any of the invested funds that are in the capital fund project are basically available the same as if it remained in the state bank. And it's in the general fund, it's just now in the capital, under capital project fund, general ledger number. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then, if the Board wants to leave it there, because you're going to have some expenses coming up anyways, it's, it's easier to pay bills when it's in the state bank. It's a little more.
Involved.
Involved to pull from the investment account.
Right.
Is there, the investment account are all CDs. CDs aren't paying anything greatly at the time. It may be more, I'd have to look, it may be more than the interest we earn in our general fund.
Well, I think we can look. It's, it's not something that the Board would have to agree on, because treasurer does the investment.
I can, but I'd be pulling money out of the state bank and putting it into the investment. And then I don't want the Board to say, "Well, you should have left it in the state bank, because we have these bills coming up."
Right.
For the Farmstead, and that's what they're earmarked for.
I think we'll have to look at it and let you know.
Okay.
Is the state bank insured up to 250,000?
Yes.
That's what the, okay.
But we have in excess of 250,000 in there, and I don't know how you can get around that.
Yeah.
When I do the investments into multi-bank securities, I make sure that they buy CDs from different banks not to exceed 250,000. So that way, I make sure the invested funds are all guaranteed, even if the bank fails, supposedly. If everything fails.
We're all in trouble.
Yeah.
If the, if the grid crashes.
Yeah.
We're all in the same boat.
Yeah, okay.
The revenue took a big hit this quarter.
Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aaron Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Bruce?
Yes.
George Collis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next is the 49-acre land contract proposal. I think I saw Dennis Nice here.
And the developer was not able to make it, so I'm going to have to.
Roll call next. Okay. I did, I thought, I know I saw him here.
I would move to.
We'll move that to old business for next month?
Yes.
We have a motion to postpone the 49-acre land contract proposal.
I'll support that.
Trustee Burton with support. Is there any discussion? I guess.
I guess we should see whether we're interested.
I do want to talk about it for a moment.
Yeah, are we interested in?
They, in your package, you'll see, I met with, this developer called, or Dennis Nice called and asked if I would meet with the developer, and a week ago Friday, I'd met with them, and they had submitted what you see in your thing, and I kind of get the feeling that the guy that's made this offer to us is more or less just reserving it while he finds somebody to buy it and play the middleman. Because as you see that offer, they want to put it on land contract, they want to put X amount of dollars down, and then they want to write it out for five years.
I did say something to Dennis about it, and he asked him, and he assured him that that's not the case, because I, I felt the same way. You know, there's only so much land we want to keep, you know, that's developable, so we can keep the rest of the township rural like we've planned on.
Yeah.
So I would hate to see.
They're wanting to purchase it, rather than a cash deal where they put the money upfront. They want to put a deposit down. You can see the numbers.
This would be similar to the sale.
Dawson.
The old fire hall to Dawson Tire.
And so it's a typical thing they do. They use, they want their investment to go to their development, and then they end up paying us off.
Yeah. So, and we do make interest, and if you look over the term of the contract, it's a little over $100,000 over that period, in excess to the purchase price.
It's just that now with the interest rates raising six, if you get a home mortgage right now, it's six.
I was going to say, yeah, the problem is the interest rate. Maybe they're advantaged in it. Did they?
Because a land contract can go as high as, what, 10%?
11.
Is it 11?
Well, and I was going to say.
That's what I paid.
Did they raise the interest rate today, 3/4 of a percent they were talking about?
I don't know.
You probably make it whatever you want.
Well, law is, isn't it 10%?
It's 11.
Or is it 11?
Or it is a law?
It was in the 80s.
Yeah, you can't pull me out of that.
Not on a land contract.
Okay.
So those are some things, I guess, to think about without the developer being here, but that being said, if the Board's comfortable with postponing it till next month?
I had a bunch of questions, but I'll wait till next month.
Well, why don't you put them out there first?
Well, the 28% down.
It might help if I.
What, what was the sale? I thought it was 499.
409.
That's what we listed for.
Okay, so what's the 28% down? 28% of 114 is not 409.
No, it's 28% of 409 is 114.
Right, 28%.
But is that not 114,000?
No. It's 407,143 or something.
No, it's pretty close. Because 30% would be 123.
What's 114 divided by?
It's, it's off by 520 bucks.
Can I take that personally?
You had, you said you had a bunch of questions.
Well, that was, just to go through the economics here.
Okay.
And.
But I'm thinking if you have questions.
It was the interest rate, what it's going to be next month, or whenever we accept it.
I just thought if you had any other questions, I can give them ads up, so they would have an answer for us.
Not really.
Okay.
So, so my question is more for us. Does this go to the planning commission after we would approve this, or this is just done here?
Yeah, it's still here.
Until they present a development.
Okay. This is just a sale of the property.
Okay. Any further discussion? None appearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Postpone it to next month. Township Hall painting proposal. We have been trying to find painters to pick up the job of painting the Township Hall. We did have somebody doing it as a community service. They got a couple of windows painted. They got some scraping done on the main level. It's going to require a bucket to get up to the higher parts of the building. We've had some other companies that have said not this year, next year, and we finally had a guy call up and said, "I can get to it this, the end of this month, if you want me to," and he submitted a bill. We had already approved.
This is for the barn doors?
Yeah, no, this is already done. This is what he gave me, and it was the barn.
Oh, is it the wrong piece?
The wrong piece.
Oh, shoot. It was 5,000, because we've already approved this with the other company, but they won't be able to get to it till next year.
Right, it was 8,800.
That was 8,800. This guy said he would do it for around 50. What we could do tonight, if that's the wrong bid, what we could do tonight is authorize this guy to do it with a ceiling of 6,000. That's lower than the other contract, plus it gets it done this. We don't sit the building for another winter without paint.
Is it in bad shape? It's embarrassing.
Yeah, well, it's the same guy. So it's the same painter as the bid in front of you, except it's, he did two bids. He did one for the barn, and he did one for the building. And the building is 5,000-something. So if the Board wants to authorize this guy to go ahead with a ceiling of 6,000, then we can just implement that.
So we're authorizing this individual?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, this, this company, to paint the Township Hall. And I know the bid is 5,000, because we talked about it's cheaper than the other company, plus he can do it this year, not next year, which was really advantageous. Any thoughts? And I guess somebody else should, all entertain the motion to approve?
Motion to approve the painting of the township hall, trim and doors from Peak Painting LLC, not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Freeman, support by Clerk Ruth, or Trustee Ruth, sorry. Hang on, get through. To authorize the painting not to exceed six thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanna say I will be a no. If anybody would like to see my reasoning, I'm not comfortable sharing it, but I do have the reason as the second page here of why I am no.
What's the second page?
Well, I'm not gonna read it out in public, but I Googled the company.
Oh. Okay.
Cause that's all I have to go by is what I saw there.
I was gonna say, I don't see anything negative, it just
Well, if you look under the name, you can see what I'm referencing.
Oh, it's not here, you have
No, it's there. The rating is what I am discussing.
Oh.
Where do the ratings come from? I mean, I Customers. Yeah, I know, but so, yeah. I mean, some of those could be, not like, I doubt all four of them are. Have we had any work done by them before, that company?
But we're being lodged.
No, he was referred to us by a resident that had done, he had done work for them. Oh, I see what you mean. Unfortunately, there's only four reviews, but there is one negative.
There are four, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
No.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Uh, George Collis?
Yes. Motion carries four, one. Number five is the smart bus, or smart contract for 2023. What does that for, I stand for?
Fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was going down the rabbit hole for your information and got stuck.
This is what we do, you know, annually. And we do transfer it to the village for the smart boss, or it's not called smart boss, for their boss.
It's the smart contract.
Yes. But I note that it went from twenty-six hundred to fifty-six hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, a nice boost. I would move to approve the fiscal year 2023 smart contract.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton to approve the 2023 smart contract for five thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Any further discussion?
So, go ahead. Input I had was from a high meeting last month, or first this month, was that they had trouble in getting rides to and from, if they were from, not from Holly, they were Grand Blank, to their doctor's office.
Yeah.
Is, is there some
The problem is the county line issue.
Which is, by the way, part of the problem with the village ballot proposal that the county commissioners put on for the point nine five mils. And that's part of the argument that I made. I said the problem with transit within Oakland County is the majority of Holly people go to Fenton, go to Grand Blank.
So Holly bus will not leave?
Well, they do go to Genesee Hospital.
Okay, but they don't go into Grand Blank or Fenton?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
I think they will go to Fenton. They'll take people to the stores, which would be, they're like Walmart and things like that, so it's they will go, but it's specific trips, you know, specific things, medical appointments and grocery shopping.
Well, that's what he said was doctor appointments in Grand Blank.
That Holly resident could not get to Grand Blank to a doctor?
I think it was a Grand Blank resident.
Well, that's
Oh, oh.
That's, that's the problem.
Cause they don't live in Holly.
They don't live in
Oakland County.
Oakland County.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
They're not a resident.
So the ballot proposal that's out there, if that passes, would that be taking effect?
Has nothing to do with this. This is federal money.
Okay.
This is what we currently operate, the two buses. We have Holly Township, Rose Township, Groveland Township, and the Village of Holly. All pooled our resources together for the two buses we have.
Ah, yeah, cause I, I was gonna say, if that's the case, we need to tell them to raise that up about three hundred and something thousand dollars so we can cover the first year.
And that's the problem. That, that ballot proposal, and, and there are, there are now twenty-eight communities within Oakland County that are opposing that. Because that ballot proposal from Holly Township alone will take three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents the first year, and it's a ten-year proposal. It's gonna collect countywide sixty-six million. They are currently collecting thirty-seven million with the old smart contract, or smart village, at a time when ridership has dropped from thirteen percent down to four percent. In the 2020 census, there are twenty-five hundred people within Oakland County that we, that rely on mass transit for getting to work. If you divide that into the sixty-six million, it's twenty-six thou, it's over twenty-six thousand dollars a person. A nice car can be purchased for a five hundred dollar a month car payment. We could buy everybody a car and it would be cheaper. It's just, they don't, they've not identified the need, and they've not even put out a plan. And that's a real problem. Nobody denies that, that transportation has its need. The issue is government should be identifying the problem, then creating the solution to fix the problem. And at that point, you need to figure out what the cost is and you pass that to the public. This is just an arbitrary three mils, pass it, and then we'll, we'll put a steering committee together and decide how to spend it. At a time where tran, mass transit is declining, not increasing. And Oakland County has twenty-eight thousand acres of agricultural land. You're gonna tax all that farmland. The apartment complexes, the mobile, mobile home communities, they're all gonna get hit with that tax. And those owners are gonna pass it on to the residents. Those, a lot of those people are your low-income people. And that burden's gonna be put on their back. And in their plan, in the drawing that they released, they don't go past Clarkson, they don't go past Waterford. So the whole northwest portion of the county, which is all that agricultural land, will get nothing except at added expense. So it's, it's a serious concern. Is there any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester? Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
George Collis?
Yes. Motion carries five, nothing. Now, we will go to, oh, number six, trustee Burton had requested at the last meeting that we look into gov delivery in the proposal. I can report to you that I actually received the email this morning. We are registered for gov delivery through the county. Amy is working on the arrangements and getting the training to be able to use the system. So I wanted to report on it, but we don't need to take any action.
Awesome, excellent.
We're all set there. So that's number six. Then I go to number seven, authorization for banking changes. Is that Karen or Mark?
That's me.
Okay.
So, um, we, George and I have discussed with Mark's retirement, we wanna make sure that we're covered for any bank changes that need to happen in interim.
Is your, you're not in the mic. I'm getting the signal.
Oh.
Can't hear you at all. That's a first. Oh, sorry. Is that my outside voice?
That was your outside voice. So I just want approval from the board that would be of record for the bank that to authorize me to make any necessary changes within the bank. I don't know what they would be, but
Yeah. Oftentimes, the, the bank requires minutes to accompany if a name change or if we have to add
Signature change or
Signature change.
Well, there'll be, we can get into that later, but I'm planning on what, what we need to do because I'm trying to think of what that word is that they use. I'm the authorized person.
Right.
First aid bank. I add people to the accounts and I authorize people, if we want them removed from it, to be able to use the accounts, access them on the computer, that type of thing. So that will pass to the new treasurer, but in the interim, as you said, you may want to have the authority to do that.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's what we're looking at. So Chair, Chair would entertain a motion to approve Karen Winchester as the interim authorized signer for the treasurer's office going forward?
The interim person to make necessary changes.
Okay.
Make changes. Yeah. She already has an authorized signatory.
Right. Is that
So moved?
Trustee Burton, move to approve?
Support.
Support by trustee Ruth. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Collis?
Yes. Motion carries five, zero. Number eight, Treasurer Freeman had asked, had a request to place an item on the board regarding COBRA funding request. Mark?
I'm retiring on October thirty-first, and all employees are entitled to one year of COBRA. I'm requesting for the board to provide funding to cover the expense of the COBRA for one year from my retirement date.
Okay, is there an authority that you're presenting that makes that possible?
It's, it's, basically it's an expense, and the board would be approving the funding for that expense.
Okay.
I guess I, I guess I'm presenting it as a retirement severance.
So all township employees would be eligible for a year of COBRA?
Yes, COBRA not funded though.
Well
COBRA is available for the employee to pay to keep their health care.
And that's a federal?
That's a federal.
That's federal. We do have, under our policies, no, this is under our ordinances, section two eighty-three, under insurance E, it says continued benefits for certain employees and officials. Any person who has continuallessly served the township for a period of twenty-five years or more as an employee, an elected official, or as both, shall upon retirement or termination of service to the township be entitled to and continue to receive benefits provided under contract covering health, hospitalization, dental, medical, or surgical service insurance arranged by the township pursuant to subsection A of the section. So this says twenty-five years. That's the only thing I could see that
Yes, and they receive those benefits for the rest of their life.
Right, okay.
And at no expense to them. So I don't think it's unreasonable after I have fourteen years of service to ask for one year of COBRA. As an example, when Clerk Winchester retires, which she will eventually, she will receive benefits, all those medical benefits that you just described, for the rest of her life, at no expense to her.
Right. That would be
That's if I stay.
That's, well, once you, once you're
Five years, but you earn that.
But at that point, you'll be on Medicare, so you would get your heartbeat.
Right.
Right. This COBRA would be covering just Medicare supplemental.
Right.
That's, and that's all I'm getting right now, is Medicare supplemental.
Yeah, okay.
Both my wife and I are on Medicare, and we get Medicare supplemental through the township.
Okay.
No, it would cover more than that. If we were to pay for it, the COBRA would be, we pay the premiums for the current health care that you get right now.
Which is Medicare supplemental. It's not the full package. I don't get full coverage.
Yes, it's
Once I signed up for Medicare?
We still pay up a Blue Care Network premium.
But it's for Medicare supplemental, it's not for folk, the folk
Do you know how much that premium is?
Yeah, fifteen hundred a month.
Oh, okay. So what are the board's thoughts?
Well, I'll just ask, is there a precedent then that we're setting for any township employee or elected official to get automatic insurance, medical insurance after they retire, or?
Well, yeah, it's not, you don't give away taxpayer money. I mean, that's, there's, you put policies and procedures in place for things like this. If you decide to retire, you're elected, you retire. There's no such thing as a severance for an elected official. When you're done, you're done.
I said I presented it as such.
Okay.
Okay.
I do, I don't have an, we, there is no provision for a severance package for any employee.
Right.
There isn't a provision for insurance benefits if you have twenty-five years.
Correct.
But it has to be continuous.
Anybody like to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve funding for COBRA for Treasurer Freeman for six months after my retirement date of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there support? Motion fails due to lack of support. Number nine, under new business, is brought down from the consent agenda. Letter dated July fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two, and a letter also dated August twenty-fourth. Uh, it's one paragraph, so I'll go ahead and read the letter. The State Tax Commission at their August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting approved the enclosed certificate of achievement. This certificate acknowledges Holly Township, Oakland County for receiving a perfect score on their two thousand twenty-two AMAR review. The commission wishes to congratulate the township and thank you for your continued efforts to provide fair and equitable assessing in the state of Michigan. Basically, what that means is the audit was submitted, and there is a set of standards that we are to use when we do the assessing for property taxes. Some, and some of those standards have to do with condition of property. They have to do with market value in the area. They have to do with poverty issues. This board, if you remember, we raised the poverty level for our township, and there's a set of standards, fourteen of them here. Mark, can I pass it to you, Steve? You and Derek on that, that we have to pertain, or that we have to follow. And when the report was submitted, they went over it, and it was determined that we met all of the standards. If one of those standards we hadn't met, they would have made a recommendation that we needed to do something in that area to approve. But this just states that we're doing everything according to the requirements.
So they audit these procedures every so many years or whatever? Okay. I appreciate that, because that's why I brought it down, because, I mean, I was reading that. It didn't even sound like English to me, so.
Nope. That's what it is.
Okay.
So anytime I get those letters, I always put them in the communications. And that's one there. Does that give you the answers you need?
Yes, I think so. That helps simplify what they-
And because it's communication, there's no action. We don't have to approve it or anything. And they did give us a certificate. Looks like a photocopy of a certificate.
Yes, I know.
Everybody can see it. It says we achieved what we're set out to do. That takes care of new business. Before I go to public comment, I want to jump back to supervisor's report. There was one piece. Every now and then I have a feeling that I've forgotten something and I just remembered what it was. We were recently, had the certificate to the township and every year, based on the Headley Amendment and adjustments in these assessments, they send us what our new allowable tax rate is. And we could be taxing at 1.22, but we have always stayed at 1 mil. And that's what we've done again this year, so that doesn't add additional expense to you. But I think it should be noted that we always stay within the budget. We always keep it at 1 mil, which is the minimum that we can charge. Correct?
That is correct. We've spent 1 mil since 1963.
Since 1963, so... Next year, we'll have 60 years under about doing that, so.
You can, it can be less if you would conform to the Headley rollback if you don't have your truth in budgeting taxation hearing every year. That's how you can bring it to one. Otherwise, the Headley rollback would bring it less than one.
Okay.
And that's what happens to the library and parks. They are subject to the Headley rollback, so they renew every... Is it eight?
Five to five years.
And you hear people talk about the parks get a half mil, but I think, didn't I see that they get 40.4?
When they renew, they get the five mils. Then as the Headley rollback each year, it trims it a little bit off of it, keeps rolling back. It's at like, it's at .49 something.
49 or 48, I think is what I saw. Right. Okay. So, but I just did want to add that.
But that's based on the total taxable value of the township. So if it reaches a certain threshold, they roll back the millage rate so that they're still getting as much money as being applied to a much bigger tax roll. So they're not, they're not getting less tax dollars, but their millage rate is reduced. Whereas with us, we don't have rollback, so each year, as the tax roll increases, the tax dollars we take in increases, not, the millage rate didn't change, taxable value changed.
Right. Okay. So I just, I wanted to add that in there. Now we go to the last public comment. Same rules. It's the first one. Limit of three minutes, and if you come to the podium, start out with your name and address. Anyone for public comment? John?
John Love, 200 North Saginaw. Goodbye, Mark. I haven't heard any discussion about what's taking place for the replacement. And I think I'd like to know what's the plan. You talked about a proposal. I don't know what the status is of it, but I think it's important to cover that.
My recommendation was rejected.
Okay.
I made my recommendation in February. I believe it was rejected at the March board meeting.
So what's going to happen? Nobody's talked about it.
It's the rest of the board's responsibility now.
I know, but I mean, you know, it should be-
We're going to have it in the paper.
Pardon?
We're putting ads in the-
Well, it's kind of late if he's going to be leaving this quickly. I mean-
Well-
In other words, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's enough of saying-
It's not formal until October 1st.
I sent you all an email-
He sent an email.
To everybody, and I relinquished the right to resend.
Yeah.
Effective immediately. That was before I went on vacation.
But it's still effective starting October 1st?
No.
You're-
No, my retirement is October 31st. I retain the right to resend that retirement notice up until October 1st. I relinquished that.
Right.
Yeah.
So there is, you can go ahead and do whatever you want.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking-
And you could as of August 28th. I think that's when I sent the email.
Mm-hmm. Nope, I know. We've talked about it. Did you have anything else, John?
Yeah, I just was trying to figure out what the status was. So you'll be here for one more meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he's here through October 31st.
And we'll have some resolution by then. Okay. I did talk to somebody that was, had been approached about buying that property, so that's what they're trying to do. That it was for sale, the 400,000 deal.
Do they want to offer more?
Well, they're trying to get more.
Okay.
Obviously. The barn door, is that going to be in the painting project?
It's painted.
It's already painted.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Last week.
Great. We have a couple of proposals coming up on the ballot. One of them is called Financial Reform Disclosure for the Office Holders, and it's changing the term limits, but they don't tell you what the real deal is. The real deal is, they want to extend the term limits on office holders for the Senate from two terms to three. And for the office holders in the House, they want to go from six years to 12. So that's not term limits. It's just a big smokescreen, and it should be defeated. Because they, anytime the office holders want to give you a plan, you know it's bad news. The... I've been trying to sort out the school system. We're about 140 in the high school. Michigan's at the bottom of the United States. We're in the bottom quarter of schools, and Michigan schools are in the bottom quarter of the United States. And of course, the United States is at the bottom of the world. So we're not doing very well in education. And they couldn't, in the minutes, they couldn't even spell Richter's name properly. When they had the wall here. Richter was killed while I was in Vietnam. And the wall was really quite an impressive thing. The thing about it, it was half scale. So when you see the one in Washington, it's a big wall and you can't really get a grip on it because there's so many names. I looked up a helicopter that had been shot down in my unit and I was wondering why the number, the names were so far apart. The way they're listed on the wall is, they list them chronologically, so they take one day, and that's the, that's the day. But all the names are alphabetical. So if you have a helicopter crew that has different names, you've got a list of four or five lines that were killed on the same day. So it really had a great impact to see that. And the ones that, when I was there, it was on the first half. They killed the second half after I left. And they're talking, they can't run the military, period. Afghanistan, they only lost 2,800, but they turned it all over to this gang of thugs that they, it's just very troubling to see what is taking place, because these are all good people. But we've got our own problems here. But I'd like to see a better school system than we have here. I don't know if they've talked to you about this plan to move to the Sherman Middle School and make that a civic center, close this place down. They're going to, they want to bulldoze this place, $600,000 and put it in a landfill because of these... That's the way they want to run the place. They could sell this place and do something beyond that and make it an asset for the community. But anyway, that's just some of what I've been seeing and taking place, so. That's the-
All right.
That's the kind of summary.
All right. Thank you, sir.
See you next week, next month, next show.
Anyone else for public comment at this time? Martin?
Good evening. My name is Mark Andruski. I live at 2105, or 2105 Middle Ridge in the Riverside North Development. This is the first township meeting that I've attended, but I've attended all of the planning meetings since May to go over the proposal of that continued development with Silverman and started my quest of finding out virtually as much as I can and everything that's happened since that development started under Silverman, failed, and then went over to BMG and, and I guess to pay on how you look at it, you know, whether it's succeeded or failed, there's 80 homes standing, but the mess is still there and the debate going back and forth with the developer and the lack of communication, you know, continues. I appreciate Karen just told me, you know, today that, you know, they've had some, they've had some communication. They, again, tried to pass on some information that after they got this next step, then they would, you know, bring, bring this information. I guess my point is, when does it stop? You know, when, when does it stop? I moved in that subdivision in April of 19, of 19 under good faith that this was something that had started up and it was going to get going. It is a mess. And the more you dig into it, the worse it gets, you know? It is unfathomable to me that I have heard that that particular developer is actually interested in continuing the development on the south side of Grange Hall Road. It is infallible to me that, that there would be any conversation with them whatsoever, especially after the stonewalling and, and the issues that they've left behind. Now, these are the issues that I understand the township is concerned. I, there's, there's nothing in me that would believe the township doesn't care, but it is really the residents that have to live with it day in and day out. You know, I don't see the appreciation that my home should see because of the mess that is there. I got fed up with seeing the grass so tall that you couldn't make a turn safely out on there, so I went and bought a lawnmower, rented a brush hog, and I cut that. The developer still could care less about coming in and finishing it. I tore up and replaced two tires because of the ruts and, and the building debris and the, and the concrete washouts. They don't do anything with it. I'd, I, I call routinely. In fact, George, I've called, called and talked to you. I've sent numerous emails to you. Karen hears from me on a regular basis. I'm sure she knows that my caller ID by heart. I was told that HRC was, that was going to do a checklist on it. I've asked routinely what was even on it. You know, what, what is pending, you know, for them? In a nutshell, the unfinished business that is left in our sub is no small scope of work, especially considering that there's only 80 homes there. The road is not done. It comfortably could be near or exceeding a million dollars to finish everything that needs to be done out there. We have nowhere near that set aside in security, you know, bonds for road commission, let alone the township. The security bonds, when they originally set up and then when the, it was amended for BMG, was there ever any increase to it? We had to know. There, it was eight and a half years from the one point of the original signing to the amendment. You know, at any point in time, did anyone stop to say, okay, what should the inflation factor be for the security bonds? And who posted them at that point? Because somewhere down the line, we are going to be on the hook for this. It's not magically going to go away, and I don't believe that BMG is ever going to just stand up and do the right thing. They've been given ample time. It's been nearly five months since that, that you had the opportunity to sit down and meet with them, and nothing's different. It's, it's been almost a year now since the final two homes had been finished and given their certificate of occupancy. So if we read the standards of what it was, they had 90 days to do things, and I mean, we're well past that, and they're no closer to doing anything, you know, with it. When is it going to come time that the lawyers, that the lawyers at least slap them and that's all there is to it? Now, are we going to be able to squeeze anything out of them? I'm not very optimistic. It's an LLC and we all know why an LLC is created. You know, get the assets out of it and there's nothing to go get. But that brought me up to my point of the sheer fact that, that any conversation with them whatsoever about doing anything extra in the township, I don't know why we would even have the meeting. I don't even know why they would be allowed to propose it when they have the unfinished project there. It's, it's inexcusable. The amount of time and effort that everybody has put into it, but I know exactly how much I've put into it and it's exhausting. But the, the choice is you either give up and accept it, and I will not do that. I don't care if it's unpopular. I don't care how many people get angry at me. I will not give up. It's an obligation. I would be, if, if I was the one that wasn't held up to the standard of the township, I guarantee they would hold me to it. They are, they are no one above me. They are a company. They came in here to make money. And they did. They made money off us. Now it's time to stand up and do the right thing. And if we have to push them, then we have to push them. That's what the security bond's there for. Or just finally say, forget it. We are going to come in here. We are going to clean it up. We are going to do that. There is so much that we can learn from what didn't go well in that subdivision, and we can't go back in time, but we can go forward. And I ask that, you know, the township seriously look at this and seriously, you know, take a look at what is going to be the model going forward? Because if the model going forward is what we used, you know, back, back in the early 2000s, it's a terrible model. It really is. It's, it's, it's a lot of heartache. It's a lot of frustration, and it's led to a lot of grief for a lot of people.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to comment on that?
I already, I let him know what was trans-
Oh, okay. Well, you, you looked at me, so I thought you were wanting to speak. Okay. Anyone else for public comment?
Thank you. I appreciate the board's wisdom and professionalism going through-
Are you chief, Wile?
I can be if you like, sir.
You're supposed to start that out for the recording secretary.
Matt Wile, Assistant Fire Chief, North Oakland Fire, and Vice President of the Firefighters Local Union.
Thank you.
May I now?
Yes.
I will proceed. So the wisdom, the professionalism, and the generosity of this board over the last two years of trials and tribulations, I can tell you is appreciated. It does not go unnoticed. The members of the fire authority, both union and non, makes comments about this board in particular and how things have been handled, addressed, and we move forward with purpose here. And again, that is greatly appreciated. We have closed a chapter in a book tonight that has been ongoing for some time, and tomorrow, we will start a new chapter, and it's thanks to you. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. The gentleman in the black. I had two hands go up and one person stood, so it kind of-
Hi, I'm Nathan Irby, 3837 Sloan Drive. I'm also HOA president for Riverside North. Similar to Martin's comments, haven't heard much about any updates on the BMD, BMG development dispute. I think last time Karen and I talked, we were giving them June 30th for some action items. I would just like some writing updates.
I'll give it to you tomorrow. I had the update today. Can I get a chance before the meeting to talk to Martin? So I will send that to you tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. Wondered if there was any update on Oakland County Road Commission finishing our road and turning it over to the public. Whenever we've called them, they don't have an update. They've come out and painted the sub twice now for areas that need to be fixed. Don't know if you've heard anything differently?
Yeah, the, the road commission won't be doing that with BMG.
I will, yeah.
Yeah.
Also wanted to make you aware that there was a fake email pretending to be us that was kind of first imitating to be from Holly Township, sent out to us. And then apparently, that same email person had been contacting with the code enforcement officer, saying that the two board members complained of RVs and other violations in our neighborhood. It was not from any of the five of us. So if you get any emails from RiversideNorthSub@gmail.com, that is not our official email. Ours is RiversideNorthHOA@gmail.com. And please let us know if you do receive anything, because we're trying to figure out who it is.
Okay. Have you called Amy at the office and had this conversation? You have? Okay.
Do you know where that email came from? Like, what was the email address that emailed you?
We were given a first name of a resident who was behind the original email to Amy. We have an idea who it is, but just in case it continues to be spread, we want to figure out. everywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
But the, the email address is riversidnorthsub@gmail.com.
Oh, that was, okay.
That's the difference. It doesn't say HOA.
I see. Okay.
But the contact that when they sent something to our official board email was said Holly Township. No sub signature, no name at the end. So just making your.
Somebody was trying to stir the pot.
Oh, yes. And they did. Had, also had some.
Is this feet, just if I can, does this, is this part of that post that was also?
Yes, sir.
That I tried answering somebody and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Angry post about the RV. And then those, because Amy's provider said two board members had complained, and so it sounded like it was coming from us, and we weren't handling something in-house, and then we went to the township, and so we were trying to clear it up.
Yeah. Well, then somebody got in there and said, I think the township just arbitrarily runs around trying to write tickets, and I said, we don't do that. And then somebody got, one thing I don't like about Facebook is when you're trying to just disseminate information and you're trying to give out the facts, people end up taking it snarky, and then you start getting, and I said, I'm not here to argue with them, just trying to give facts. And then somebody said, well, you're being, and it was like, no.
That's our subdivision.
I know. Well, and as I've told Nate, I said, next time you guys have an HOA meeting, I would love the opportunity to come and talk to everybody and let them know our office is open. We're here to, to help people, and we're not, we don't ever try to do that. We do have responsibilities, and, you know, sometimes we have to move in that respect.
We're in, it's the plan of mine now.
But we don't just drive around looking for things to write tickets for.
Of course not.
The code, the code enforcement is complaint driven.
Right. And that's what I said.
There has to be a complaint to respond to.
And that's what I said in my post. And then I went one step further. I said, it's complaint driven. However, if we get a complaint in a neighborhood, then we do the neighborhood so that it's unilateral enforcement, because the last thing you want is to say, okay, you can't have that there. And then he goes, what about that guy? So once we get a complaint, we just kind of cover the neighborhood and say, okay, you know. But yeah, it is complaint driven. Township, what?
Okay. The last thing is, there's been a lot of complaints and a lot of parents at the Peterson Elementary.
Patterson.
Patterson. Thank you. Within our neighborhood, parent pickup of their children, including on our homeowners' lawns, and we've tried contacting police. Any recommendations on that? We plan on probably buying some no parking signs.
I see. Have you been to the school board?
When, last time we, some, a resident before we were reformed had sent a letter to them, and they seemed apologetic, and they included it in a newsletter to the school, but apparently went unheeded.
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to speak for the schools, but I'm just thinking the difficulty there is it's a public street.
But it's private at this point.
Yeah, well, that's true, too. I was going to say, but they don't have jurisdiction over either way, the school themselves.
Right. I mean, the best they can do is ask them not to.
Reach out to their parents.
Any health complaining, and an alternative pickup location would be beneficial and helpful.
You're still having those problems right now? Let me reach out to, state police covers the township. Let me reach out to them and see if we can't help you with that.
Yes, thank you. And then also wanted some clarification on who's actually responsible for landscaping along Riverside and Riverside Drive entrance, whether it goes to the fence, along the sidewalk. Is the sidewalk a responsibility, or is it all part of the schools?
Are you talking about the side that's on the school?
Yes.
That would be theirs, wouldn't it?
No, it's, it's private. It's Riverside North Homeowners Association.
On the school side?
Responsible for the landscaping. Yep, it's theirs.
Oh, is that, that strip, so the school doesn't come out to the street? Oh.
So basically, there stops at the fence on both blocks? Just so we, we're aware as we make plans for landscaping in the future.
Well, there you go.
I think that's all my comments.
Okay. Thank you. And that takes us over to Mr. Kinnaman.
Do a little head cold thing, so hopefully I can talk without coughing. Richard Kinnaman, four one five one Stonebridge, mostly here speaking as the Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. We have two events coming up in the next couple of weeks. One of them, tomorrow evening, is a Meet the Candidates event that will take place beginning at six thirty in the cafeteria here at Carl Richter Center. I have a very nice response to, from roughly twenty-five candidates. About the only ones I don't have are the top three in the state. So it, it will be a very nice evening. Most, pretty much the local candidates will each have a two-minute opportunity to present their, present themselves, and the county commissioner and the state representative level will each have a couple of questions issued to them. The next thing is October eighth, Saturday, is our annual Dixie Byway Car Show, beginning with a cruise from Wayside Church down your Bourdines. Cars begin gathering about eight thirty. About nine thirty, they pull out and make this massive parade up, up Dixie all the way to Mount Holly, where we have from ten o'clock till two o'clock, an open to the public, no cost car show. This year, we have live entertainment courtesy of Oakland County Parks. They have provided a stage and, and a band for us. Highway forty-five will be doing oldies naturally for old cars, and we give out prizes and People's Choice Awards and a lot of fun things. Even if you don't have a classic vehicle, I'm sure you like to look at them. Please come on out and, and enjoy the day. Thank you.
What time will they be at Mount Holly, you think?
Ten to two.
Okay.
Yep.
And our school board members at the Meet the Candidates event as well?
School board candidates.
People running for school board, I should say?
Yes.
Nice. Okay.
Yes. And they will be a part of that two-minute presentation.
Okay, sweet.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Gentlemen, whoop, I got a couple of them. Well, now they're going to argue who goes first. Age before beauty.
Maybe profiling. Randy Finkviner, one five three three five Catalina Way, Holly Township. Again, I'd like to thank the board for the support of the fire department. As you know, I'm part of that, and for conducting business in a very civil manner, because I've attended other township board meetings near and dear to our heart in our fire district that don't go so well. But they do have one section of their agenda that I like, which you guys don't, and you may want to entertain, and I've brought it up before, is in events, upcoming events, announcements. We have a couple coming up. The fire department will be at Deals Orchard this Sunday on the twenty-fifth, and we'll be presenting our public education department, and they're having a cider fest. So we're out there meeting the public and showing them what you guys support and who we are. And then you didn't even promote your own event on the first, which is your cleanup date. And then the second, we have the North Oakland Open House, our annual open house in fire prevention week. And I'm, I'm part of the public education department.
Is that open house on the third?
It is on the second. It's a Sunday. If I got my dates correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, and that runs from twelve to three, and it's going to be at the Station Three complex this year, two eighty West Rose Center Road. And we alternate years back and forth. We've missed a couple of years because of the COVID pandemic, but it's now been declared over, so we're, all systems normal. But, so I wanted to make those announcements for the township and possibly consider putting a little bit in your agenda or your announcements to announce upcoming events, maybe not.
That's pretty much what this last public comment's for. That's what you did? That's what, I mean, that's.
Yep, it is, and it worked out.
You just would rather see it labeled events?
Well.
Public comment and events?
In the other township, not comparing you to them, but they do actually announce things without commentary. They just announce.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Time and date of what's coming up in, in their area and what might be pertinent to their residents.
Gotcha.
So, and I think these three things I just spoke of are pertinent to our residents.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Gentlemen in the red.
Good evening. My name is Justin Kalner. I'm a resident of Springfield Township, but I'm here as a student in a master's of public administration course at Oakland University. I received an assignment to attend a meeting of a local government unit I'm not a part of, which my professor will be very pleased that you guys talked about Headley and Headley rollbacks, because he's all about that kind of stuff. In addition to my report, I also have to take a photo of my attendance, so if you would, I'd ask that you stick around for a photo or.
We can do that for you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for public comment?
None appearing.
None appearing. I will close the meeting if the board would stay.